So I guess we'll. Welcome to the joint. Meeting of the current building committee and the JV Fisher Library Board of Trustees of June 2, 2025. As always, this is being recorded, therefore anything that is interested in the chat or spoken in the form because part of the public record. That being the case, could I ask Buffy to read the roles?
Yep. Okay, here we go. Derek's here. Fleckner?
Here.
Roach?
Here.
Oh, good. I didn't have you. Thank you, Caroline.
I just signed in.
Good. Perfect. Seacor?
Here.
Segal? I saw Marius here. Maybe she doesn't have a voice on it. But that's okay. I saw you, Mary. Teal?
Here.
Cook? Absent. Hazelton?
Here.
Karpinski? Absent. Patton? Absent. Roberts?
Here.
Winberg?
Here.
Zegowitz?
Here.
Berlinsky is absent. Perkins?
Yeah.
Leadburg?
Here.
Rainville?
Here.
Lass?
Here.
Goodwin?
Here.
LeRoi?
Here.
Luzitis? Mark, you are here.
Sorry, here.
That's all right. And none of the FAA people, is that right?
Correct. No, they are not here.
Okay, here we go.
Ron?
So we've got a quorum of both committees. So I guess the first item of business then is to approve the minutes from our May 5 meeting. Are there any? Comments, errors, omissions to be passed along? I take the resulting silence as being a no. So is there motion to approve the minutes?
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Wait a minute, who won that?
I thought I heard Glenn first, but.
Okay.
Glenn could have it.
And who's second? Tom?
Tom.
Okay. Okay, here's our voting. Derek's eye. Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach?
Aye.
Seacor?
Aye.
Segal?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook not here. Hazelton?
Aye.
Karpinski not here. Patton not here. Roberts?
Aye.
Winberg?
Aye.
Zegowitz?
Aye.
10-0-0?
Great, thank you. Next up is the report setting with the architect's report. I don't think anyone's here from architects, correct?
That's correct.
So the OPM will handle everything?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll give it to you, Jennifer.
So I will take it from here. So. Okay for me to continue, Buffy?
Yep.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So to kick it off, I just want to just reiterate, I think many of you heard this as we were starting up the call. But my colleague Mark Luzitis is on the phone with me. And so he is, he's here to meet you all. And just to give a little brief introduction, I think some of you heard this already, but Mark is our onsite representative. So he is at the site every day. You may have seen him there or over this process, you may see him there. He also just recently helped complete the Sharon Public Library. So he came from that role. And he has been on the site now for, for a couple of weeks as, as construction has officially kicked off.
I just want to say hi to everybody. I would, I would also add that the Sharon Library completed me as well.
Well, luck, luck, and welcome to the team, Mark.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah, wonderful. I've enjoyed my experience so far in Westford. It's been great to meet some of the people and dealing with all your departments. Everyone seems to be very helpful and cooperative and it's very much appreciated.
I'm sure that Chris is glad to hear that.
Looking forward to working with everyone.
So, so moving forward, just you, you may see correspondence from me or correspondence from Mark. I know that everyone within the town manager's office, Mark has met all of them. Mark has met Ellen. Mark has been working closely with Hutter. He's met all of the people in the design team and he's also met a lot of the people in the collective town of Westford offices who are related to engineering, fire and building commission, building commissioner, et cetera. So all of those related offices. I am going to take control of the screen for a moment because I just wanted to share some updates. So. We produced a quick summary of what's happening on site. And so this is a summary of the construction activities. Construction has started. The scope of work that's on site right now is falls under two areas. One is site work and in particular, site preparation work. So tree removal and erosion control and things of that nature. And then on the interior of the building, there is a lot of things that fall under the category of make safe as in, you know, safely severing electrical and plumbing items and your IT items as well as abatement. And so the official start of the construction has started, the notice to proceed has been issued. But as of this moment, demolition hasn't started as its own phase because these are items that happen in advance of demolition. And so importantly, the abatement team also has an industrial hygienist as part of that. That's an independent consultant who is working directly for the town. So they are onsite and they have to prepare reports. And upon the completion of those, the Board of Health for Westford will review those. And that will be the trigger that gives us our demolition permit. There is some other construction items that are going on. A lot of these you'll see, this will be attached to the minutes. And I think just moving forward, this type of report will get attached to the minutes so that you'll have this at your disposal. But the, this type of information, a lot of this is meetings, as you can see, with different town officials and fire department, public safety, et cetera. And, and then the other piece that I wanted to share in here is some photographs of some current construction activity. All taken by Mark. So with much thanks to him. This is a crane doing tree removal. This is part of the erosion control. This is a silt fence and sock. And that was all work that was reviewed by the town as well as our civil engineer. This is some of the fencing and the gate installation. This is grubbing on the site work as they do site clearing. And this is on the interior. This is an area where abatement has been completed. And so there's areas within the abatement that nobody can access until the all clear has been given. So there's a couple of construction site photos for us. Before I move on to anything else, just want to stop there for any questions.
Yes, that's, I'm glad you brought those up. Can those be sent out before the meeting?
Like, yes, this, um, this is a bit of a last minute. So we were getting this. But our intent would be that we would be publishing something like this more on a weekly basis. This is the summary of last week's activity. And so, you know, in a month, you'd have four reports like this, maybe five, if it's a five week month. And then Ellen can collect them and they can be sort of reviewed. And our intent is, you know, to generally share about five photographs with a report just for file size, though we do have record of other photographs for the project.
Ellen, is there a construction specific landing for the library? We could post these?
Well, Ellen finds her mute. I just, so I, I, I don't know what has been done in the past related to transparency. We may want to think about, do we post these or not? I think Ellen is creating a landing page for the construction. So we can certainly do some photographs, but I don't know if all the text you want out there for the public, that's up to this group to decide.
I was thinking, I was just thinking of some, yeah, picking one like with the rotten bush, we picked one or two to put on the website, not the whole kit and caboodle.
But if they, if they, if they are going to be meeting attachments, they are going to be public. So that's not an issue.
We could, we could copy and paste some of the pictures on the, the webpage that we have. We, Ellen has a library building project. We have a dropdown menu on the website. But we also have a weekly newsletter with the friends. Um, so we could consider putting some pictures in there too, because we were talking about doing construction updates, Ellen is. And the town website has a special projects page. So it might be that, that that's a place we put some of the photos that really make it clear what, you know, advancement is taking place. So we could put them in three or four different places. Yeah.
It's a, so this, it's a big project, a lot of visibility. So, you know, transparency is a good thing.
Yes.
Shrink progress is also a good thing.
Yes.
So we at CHA have been involved in that. And I know Kristen Lass and Ellen and I have talked a bit about this. I think we were, we were trying to gather some thoughts on it and make a recommendation for, for that. I think it would be beneficial to, to think of this more like information, but also a little bit of PR. And I attended the Mass Library Association meeting two weeks ago. Ellen was also there. It was a conference, the yearly conference for them. And a lot of other libraries do something similar. And there are some best practices that I took away for some information like this. And we at CHA, Sharon Public Library being a really good example, we, we did something very similar like that with the town. And I am not tech savvy enough to tell you how this works. But in that instance, while the town had different spots, like a page on the town website and the library had a page, they all kind of pointed to the same update. So there was only one that had to be done. And that was the page that was being more continually updated. I don't know how they do that in the background. There's some tech magic, but I'm sure there are some very smart people who understand that.
Just speaking of people, Kristen, I guessing probably our communication guys are already on this.
And so Jennifer and Ellen and I were talking about how we would do it. We're not quite sure if CSS will be the lead or if CHA and the town will be the lead, but we are working through it. And Mike Wells has been in the loop as well.
That's the brain trust, all right.
I'm sure Mike can figure it out.
I thought too, which could be an idea to bring people to 515 Groton Road, which is a temporary site is latest pictures. So whatever pictures we use, when people are visiting 515 Groton Road, there could be updated posters there as well. If that's possible to not cause more work, though.
Yeah, off topic, but Ellen was talking to people this weekend and they are really impressed with what you've done at 515 Groton Road. They're prepared to think for a warehouse. They were, they got, they got a library. They're really happy with it.
Well, thank you. We're, we're, we're really settling in well and we do keep having to remind people that we have 100,000 items down in the basement. But yes, we're, we're, we're finding it very comfortable and we're very grateful.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt. Carry on, Jennifer.
There are a couple of other items that I wanted to update everyone on. The town has a vendor who is assisting us with water protection measures as part of your builder's risk insurance. So there is work underway for that. And also we have kicked off our OAC meetings, which are the owner architect contractor meetings. So that's our one week, once a week meeting. Chris Karpinski had joined us as a representative of this group. And we are currently hosting those virtually. But soon the trailers will be installed on the site and we will move to an in-person meeting. And those, the, the time of them is, our intent is that in the end they're on Tuesday mornings. But we're, while everything's being organized, they're not falling on Tuesday mornings quite yet. And then finally, the, the, I met with Beth Perkins, who's on the call here, as well as a gentleman, Ben Hamer, who is from a company called Slipstream. And this was to bring us to the next phase of the mass save program. And I believe that in the past, these minutes had been forwarded to the joint committee as part of an attachment. I, I'm doing that from sort of looking through my notes of when Alicia was in the project, because that was the last time we had a meeting with Mass Save. But that, I just wanted to give everyone an update that there is, that's your rebate process for Mass Save, your incentive process. And so that is continuing to move forward. We do have some minutes from that. I'm just curious if that, if Ellen, if that's accurate, that these had been previously attached to joint committee meetings? Or if that's just? I, I forward them, but I think I'll have to collect the construction reports and add this to our next packet. So I didn't forward it today. I did save it, but I haven't forwarded. Yes. And I, I think it's, I don't know if Ellen was going to bring this up, but I, I, I wanted to make everyone aware that we had applied for a MAB variance and that was received from the State Office of Public Safety. I have, I think I'm still sharing my screen, so you should be able to see it. The approval is just a simple letter, but for those, this is, we, this is the process we had for the variance application and it was all related to the north entry of the library on Main Street remaining and it's as is condition. And the south entry being the accessible entry and the primary entry for the building.
No, just, just the opposite.
Oh, the opposite. Sorry. You say south. And, and so I have put this in my issues for the future folder because it's reminding us that there has to be signage at the, at the front entrance. And we kind of promised the historical commission, it would be granite. And they're also asking for appropriate lighting in the walkway. So I've added this to my issues folder, along with our need to ask the select board for a right to go on their property when the rear retaining wall is put at the back of the parking lot. And now it sounds likely that we'll need to do this with First Parish Church as well. So. And I think that is everything for the construction update and the architect's update. The second item that I had on my agenda is about the construction testing. And this was sent out in advance, two very long RFPs for construction testing. And one is, there are two documents that still have yellow highlights with the intent that once they're approved, these, those dates would be updated. But one is specifically for the independent construction testing, which is within here, testing on soils, on concrete. There's also testing on masonry and steel. And it's as well as the roof and some other areas. And the, the other RFP is for window testing. And so that one is actually a bit shorter because it is for air leakage and water penetration and structural inspections. So this, these are two RFPs that we have written. The, there's a piece of near the beginning that is for the technical testing. And then as it moves through, there is a lot of documents which are just the town's standard bid forms. These are incredibly repetitive packages with the only difference being the test summaries. And this package has been also published to the town manager's office as well as who has passed it on to town council. And so we are requesting the approval of this so that we can issue this out. And one other point is that this value is under $50,000. And so this procurement method will not be put out to the central register and so on, so forth. It will be sent to an invited list of construction testing agencies. We at CHA have a list of agencies we have worked with. We've also contacted Hutter Construction, who has some agencies that they have worked with. And we, we will send that out to all of them and track their bids. And then have a bid form that this, with the bid results, so that this team can approve the construction testing. And we do separate it from construction testing and window testing because we have found that not every company can do window testing. And so we have found at CHA, it's been more amenable to the cost of the process to break them up so that window testing, which is, not every company has the equipment and the ability to do that. The other types of testing are far more commonplace and that it can be more advantageous for the town's cost to break them up. Thomas, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I understand why the window is separate now, which was my original question. But why is the curtain wall there with the window, but the roof is not?
Yeah, that's, that's my question too, was we had talked about extra testing for the roof. Would that be a separate RFP or is that somehow?
Well, that's in the first document. It's 11. Or is that not what you were looking for, Scott?
Well, we just talked about extra testing. Why we're sure that whatever, you know,
beyond the, what I see standard, does that, does that mean that it's actually standard? Or does that mean it's actually what we asked for over and above the standard?
There's a few questions there. So I'm, in terms of why, I actually could, I could put the roof testing in with the window testing. I have, I have heard anecdotally that it is the window testing that has caused the complication of other testing. But, but I'm happy to, to break the, to separate them up that way. The.
That's true then why, you know, you also have the curtain wall over with the window testing.
Well, that's all part of the same system, wouldn't it? The curtain wall windows are all one sort of assembly, I think.
Yes, it is.
Well, we replace windows without replacing walls, but.
Well, the, 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 and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but the curtain, when they talk, when you talk about curtain wall, it's the, excuse me, it's the entire assembly of glass pieces, framing pieces that continue up, story to story. They'll have some opaque glass in them to hide the structure and things like that. So it's sort of a section of wall that is assembled through glass and other members. But it's typically all handled under the, the, it's, it's usually that, that portion of it is handled by the, the glazing company and the window manufacturer.
This is not the wall itself?
No, no, this is not the wall. This is the glazed portion of the wall, the glass and glass framing, the structural framing for the glass.
Is, is the curtain wall is covered in section 12?
Yes.
Live and learn.
Back, back on the roof. I mean, if, if Jeff was fine with it, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure that every project we've done love me with, it's had a roof problem. So I just want to make sure we were in front of that one, but you know, Jeff's expert here, not, not me. So.
I, I would like to hear from Jeff, but I will mention that when we talked about this a couple of months ago, I did reach out to our commissioning agent and I asked them for additional roof testing that they would suggest. And that is this testing here. So, so this is, I think, what, what might be considered above and beyond it for the roof testing. This is our commissioning agent, what they recommended for that. And they, they would be the agent of our party, of our team, who will be reviewing this and, and reviewing the results of that. They also will be participating onsite when some of these tests are happening for the roof testing.
Well, Scott, is your, is the concern about, it's, this is, you know, the standards about horizontal roof is, was that your concern and?
No, no, just, just that with, you know, burden bush leaks or leaked, been fixed, you know, the fire station leak has been fixed. Whatever we do here, we test it early before we have occupancy, then have to do with it with people in it, which is much more difficult to do. But this is, this, is this just as a concern? I'm fine. Oh, and by, and by the way, Chris Karpinski is on via phone. He's happy to be promoted or not, depending upon, you know, how easy that is, but he is available if you want to leave him for a vote.
Okay. My, my point, Scott, is Roddenbush is not a horizontal roof.
True, true.
And this standard that they're citing here is for horizontal roof. It's not a, and I assume the library is a horizontal roof. Is that true?
It's a mixture.
Okay. Well, then does this cover the non-hora zonal roof part?
I will confirm that. And if it's not the appropriate test, I will make sure that that gets added.
I just looked it up and it says horizontal.
This is flood testing for horizontal.
Yep.
Delation.
That's our concern.
I know that Jim and Jean both have their hand up. I'm wondering if you want to add on that roof testing comment or if that's something separate.
No comments on the roof testing. I would assume that would be the horizontal membrane type roofing.
So I think that just to add to that, the, the second item, electronic leak detection. That's what I was expecting was going to be looking at the leaks, the possible leaks at, at all the crickets, at the, where the fascia hits the, you know, the, the gutters versus the, you know, the shingled roof. I'm worried that the number two only talks about waterproof membranes when it should be talking about leaks in all the other joints. That, that's the problem at the, at the fire station is it's those joints where, you know, things are popping up through the roof. And, and so given all the gables, I'd like them to look at detection, leak detection all over the place.
I think that that might be an appropriate reason why, first of all, these two tests, I can move into the other. Or, or frankly, I can make them their own item. What this will, what you're getting in the end for the RFP is that people are giving you costs on a day, a half day or a sample. It sort of depends on what this is. And so, so breaking these up into other pieces is not, it's not a real challenge other than. It's not a real challenge, um, other than there's, that's why the, the remainder of the packages are, um, repetitive.
Yeah.
This is really what's unique about each package. Jean, I don't have an answer to that, but I will look into that and I can, um, prepare a summary for the, um. Joint Committee so that this gets amended related to that.
Yeah, I would think WSP would know what to do with that, that's, you know, how to write the, you know, what ASTM. Sections will relate to a gabled roof, a shingled roof, a roof with a lot of. Skylights and, uh, you know, other projections.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Jim, I think you also have a question.
Well, I did, I was, and I'm sorry, I don't know, uh, off the top. But do we have any, uh, do we have any SFRM spray, do we have any, uh, fire, uh, sprayed on fire proofing called for in the structure? Just, um. I know that I, and I, it just comes up because I recently bumped into this one and just, uh, if, if we do, that's something I think we ought to have. So make sure we get that tested as well, the thickness and adequacy of coverage. I don't even, be honest with you, I really don't even know if it would be required in a building like this, uh, since it's a single use site, we probably don't have. I don't, I don't even know if we have it called out in the drawings, so just, uh, it was just, just a question.
I will, um, I will, I don't have an answer to you, but, um, I will look into what our steel, um. Fire protection is, um, on that and, um, but, um. Typically for any steel, there is a requirement of, um, report that, um. Shows compliance with the required thicknesses of them. Um, we, I don't believe we have anything that's like intimsent, where there's specialty. But we do have some structural steel framing and, um, for the spray-on-fire protection requirements, um, I will. I'm not familiar enough to answer that question.
Okay, yeah, I just, I know when, what they, they can be kind of sticky that they, because those things have, uh. A lot of, uh, prop requirements, temperature, application requirements, things like that, that we want to make sure that we're in good stead with as they go. Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Anything?
So while this testing needs, um, the, the, the sections of here. I need to clarify a few items, um, the remainder of this document is, um. You know, the, the meat of the document is in this, um, bid form piece. Um, but the remainder of this is, um, standard language that we've used, um, on multiple projects. And, um, with a combination of the Town of Westford standard, um, bid forms. Aside from the technical aspects, are there any questions about the other pieces of that? Cause if not, what I. We were requesting approval to, um, proceed with this tonight. I recognize it needs some edits before it can be done. However, the next joint committee meeting is in mid-July. And, um, we would like to have this published and out to bid prior to that. And I, I don't know if that. We, we would, we're trying to prevent the need to have an interim joint committee meeting. So I'd like to know if there's any suggestions.
I think, I think we could, um, you know, Kristen's on the line and I think, I think Jeff were, this, if not, she can get hold of Jeff. I mean, I think we, we, we could say that they've heard the concerns, so we approve it subject to review by. Uh, town manager, facilities director and, um, and, and go from there, so we, we could get you to prove tonight.
Great.
So I guess, I guess the, the, the motion would be, or the request for motion would be to approve. You know, both of the RFPs. Requesting that the town manager and facilities director. Work with CHA to address the concerns mentioned tonight.
And those concerns would be specifically the roof testing, is there anything other than the roof testing that we're concerned about?
That's all I heard.
Um, there is a second one, which is to confirm the spray-on-fire proofing.
That's what I wanted, I thought it was something else. If we could just put those two items in the motion.
So it's a funny amendment that that's to my, to my proposed motion. Is there a, is there a, uh, motion to accept or proceed?
A move that we accept, subject to review of the roof testing and the fire concern. With the understanding that, uh, CHA will work with the town manager and facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion Tom, second Jean, uh, Buffy, please work the magic. And, and Chris is now available to vote Kapinski.
Okay, Chris is here right phone, right?
Correct.
Okay. Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
C four.
Hi.
Siegel.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Hook not here, Hazelton.
Hi.
Kapinski.
Hi.
Patton not here, Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Segowitz.
Hi.
So eleven zero zero.
Great, we had ten plus one, it works out math wise.
I still had to count it.
No, I was just checking the account to, uh, we had a Chris left with, with ten zero, now we have eleven zero, so I guess it's, up, up to you next.
Okay.
The gender went, went away, but I know I saw.
Here, let me.
Library director after.
I, here we go. Um, yes, so, um, you know, we've been more than a month in our new temporary site. And, um, we're just gathering statistics since all of May was in, um, this reduced site. So we're going to be very interested to see what our circulation data was like. Um, we have moved a few last things over from fifty Main Street. We really appreciate the help of facilities and Jeff, we had one last Rubbermaid Shed to come over and a snow blower to come over. So, um, we really have pulled over everything that we intended to. Um, we've done a little bit of resettling of some collections down in the basement, but, uh, otherwise we're doing well. And, uh, we're gearing up for our summer reading program, which, um, will be unique this year. We run it for three different age groups, elementary age, teens and tweens, adults. Um, all of our programming will take place either at the third floor of, um, Roden Bush in the Recreation Department. Or at New Nab School, so that will be, um, unique for us. It will also reduce our foot traffic and, um, we're going on Westford Cat this Thursday. To, uh, do a videotape to promote that, so we're all looking forward to that. That would, would traditionally be our busiest time of year when circulation goes up about thirty percent.
Any questions for Ellen? Okay, I guess we're on to the approval of warrants, invoices, et cetera.
So this is a mix of, um, still some moving costs, American alarm. We had to have some boosters for our panic alarms. Um, Cabot risk strategies, you approved, that's the builder's risk insurance. Um, this is finally the bill. Um, our, our CHA services for the last month, our very first bill from Hutter Construction. Um, we had, uh, a, a distinct cost for our second photocopier that had to be moved by the vendor. We have our monthly lease is here and then, um, there was a final cost, there were two separate invoices. For the VPN tunnel that had to be installed. And so this is the end of that particular, uh, piece of work that made it possible for us to stay on the town network. So all told, the warrant equals six hundred and seventy-two thousand twenty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
And these are all in the budget, right? So something here is, is, uh.
Correct.
Okay.
They're all within budget.
Any other questions for Ellen on these items? If not, I would take a motion to, um, approve the warrants, the warrants and invoices. As outlined by Ellen, summing to six seventy-two, oh, twenty-eight and fifty-six cents.
Moved.
Glenn makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I guess second from Jean, I heard her first, so if you recall the role, please Buffy.
Yep. Derek's eye, Fleckner. Let's see. Fleckner. Okay, there you are.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, Roach.
Hi.
C core.
Hi.
Siegel.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Hook not here, Hazelton.
Hi.
Kapinski.
Hi.
Patton not here, Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Segowitz.
Hi.
Eleven zero zero.
Great, thank you. Apparently we have nothing under item five, a, a, a proposal, so we can move on to old business, which is groundbreaking, assuming that is you, Ellen.
Yes, so, um, if this date is agreeable with everyone, Monday, June twenty-third at ten-thirty. The groundbreaking might actually be with a heap of dirt, uh, on Main Street. You know, outside of the construction fence. And then, um, you know, I have to reach out to the church, but we might be walking up the sidewalk and having, uh, refreshments. At the church next door in the fellowship hall. So, um, as we get into June, we all know that we have graduation this weekend. We have the strawberry festival either Saturday or Sunday the next weekend. I, I didn't want to look at the sixteenth, it doesn't give us enough time. Amherst is doing their groundbreaking on the eighteenth, so that day's taken, the nineteenth is Juneteenth. And I thought, you know, a lot of people might take a long weekend that weekend. So that's why I'm looking at June twenty-third and if that's amenable to you, we'll work on the invitations. You know, to all of our, um, commissions, the town staff, you know, everyone who's been a part of this. Uh, all of our legislatures and we'll get invitations out.
Anyone objecting to the conflict? It sounds like you, it sounds like you're golden, Ellen.
Okay, we'll go with that date and that.
Thank you.
Right, and then I did send separately the Amplifund report because I was so late in doing it. So, um, if you'll just vote approval of that, that would be wonderful.
Is there a motion to approve or any questions, is there other, any questions on the report first?
I, I can open it up if anyone.
I'm assuming that everybody read it then, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Amplifund monthly report of April twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
That was Caroline, okay.
Okay, I guess another roll call, please Buffy.
Yep, so Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
C core.
Hi.
Siegel.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Hook is not here, Hazelton.
Hi.
Kapinski.
Hi.
Patton not here, Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Segowitz.
Hi.
So past eleven zero zero.
Thank you, um, reminder that we are back again as one happy family on July fourteenth. Remotely and, um. Absolutely, at the, at the business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So I think it's Jim is in motion and Glenn's a second. And.
Okay, Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
C core.
Hi.
Siegel.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Hook not here, Hazelton.
Hi.
Kapinski.
Hi.
Patton not here, Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Segowitz.
Hi.
Eleven zero zero and we are adjourned at seven nineteen.
Thanks, thanks everybody.
Thank you so much and trustees.